Good evening, I'd like to call our regularly scheduled town council meeting to order for Monday, March the 11th. Shall we pray? Our most gracious heavenly Father, as we assemble here tonight, as always, let us be mindful of the truly many blessings that we have, your heavenly Father. As we look around us, dear Lord, at what you have gifted us around us, it is truly a blessing and something you have bestowed upon us. Your heavenly Fathers, we go forward tonight and in the future, let us be also mindful and give us the strength and the knowledge to do your will and do what is in the likeness of you. In Jesus's name we pray. Amen. Shall we stand?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank y'all. Roll call Anna.
Lily Fagan Spoon.
Here.
Ashley Hardy.
Here.
Gavin Honeycutt.
Present.
Lisa Jordan.
Here.
Dolores Lester.
Here.
Mike Moody.
Here.
Michael Smith.
Here.
And Joseph Taylor.
Here.
Thank you. On the agenda, council, we have, I think, an addition. Can we not tell it?
You do.
All right, if you would, tell us what that is.
The addition is under the town manager report to add Agenda Item C, and that's an Employment Personnel Policies and Procedures Manual Update.
Is there any other addition? Do I have a motion for approval with the agenda plus the addition?
So no.
Discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you.
Good evening.
Good evening.
Mr. Mayor, members of council, National Night Out is an annual community building campaign that promotes police community partnerships to make our neighborhoods safer, more caring place to live. National Night Out enhances the relationship between neighborhoods and law enforcement for bringing back the true sense of community. Furthermore, it provides a great opportunity to bring police and neighborhoods together under positive circumstances. Millions of neighborhoods take part in National Night Out across thousands of communities from all 50 states, US territories, and military bases worldwide on the first Tuesday in August. Neighborhoods host block parties, festivals, parades, cookouts, and various other community events with safety demonstrations, seminars, youth events, visits from emergency personnel, exhibits, and much, much more. The awards program recognizes registered communities for participating in National Night Out. Each registered community will be competing with other communities of similar populations across the nation. We're proud to announce and thanks to the hard work of Deputy Chief Geis and all the members of the South Hill Police Department and all of our community partners that we placed 11th nationally in 2023.
And chief, it was the Dunkin' Boot that pushed over the end.
There is no doubt it was the most popular thing. The other item I have is we would like to part, we're partnering with the state police area office here and with the FIT Club. We would like to do a pre-Memorial Day Murph Challenge and use Cycle Lane and Arnold Drive. For those of you who aren't familiar, Lieutenant Murphy was a US Navy SEAL. If you've seen the movie Lone Survivor, he's the one that climbs up and gets killed trying to radio for help. He did this exercise called the Murph Challenge. It's a mile run, 100 pull-ups, 200 push-ups, 300 air squats, and another mile run. And so it's a way to challenge yourself and show respect to our veterans and stuff like that. So this is something that the First Sergeant and I have been kicking around for a while. I wanted to do this. We just wanted to come to council since it's not approved route and just ask for approval on the 19th of May, 9:00 AM to Sunday. Memorial Day is a big thing for us as far as doing enforcement and being out there, so we're going to get, deal with this a little bit ahead of it. But it's also an opportunity for us to be out, partner with the community. We're going to get some veterans out there, some National Guardsmen, and hopefully some active duty folks out there along with first responders. And then folks will do this together. Have, you can do it as a team or do the full Murphy out there. So we just wanted to make sure we did everything right and ask council's approval for that.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes.
I move to approve the route as requested by Chief Boeing for a pre-Memorial Day Murph Challenge on May the 19th.
Second.
Discussion? With that motion, council, will that require council and the mayor to participate as well?
Don't they can?
No, they can't. I'll see if that was included in the motion.
I'll pass that water, man.
All right, all right. Any other discussion? All right, we have a motion and a second Anna. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?
And then, Mr. Mayor, as information only the council's been provided, with a copy of the traffic report for traffic.
Thank you.
Yes, sir, thank you.
Mr. Paul?
Mr. Mayor, members of council, so I ask if I could come before you tonight to share a piece of information about the South Hill Fire Department we just received. I thought it was something that's very important to us, but, so John T. Hannah has been in Traffic Safety Excellence and working with the Drive Smart and Drive Safe Program for a little over 60 years before he passed away, working with VDOT and Virginia State Police. Those teams kind of created a nonprofit. That nonprofit went out to support traffic safety hazards, the traffic safety initiatives, the hashtag moveover campaign, the hashtag distracted driver awareness program. They also were one of the very first to set up in Hampton Roads, Virginia with the car seat details where they were going to check the car seats and make sure they were installed correctly. And his emphasis was always on public safety and traffic safety initiatives. And so, South Hill Fire Department received a letter out of the blue, probably about three months ago, that we had been submitted before that committee to be reviewed for the prestigious award. We had to provide some information. I didn't understand what exactly it was at the time, so I did a little research, did my homework. And basically what happens is they look for you in an agency that goes out and continues to push for traffic safety initiatives and someone that's continuing to be out in the field working with new youth and driver safety programs and preaching the moveover law and the distracted driver law. With that, they looked at our truck that we have on our trailer that we use as a prop to take to the schools when the kids are getting a new driver's license and around the different communities. Because we've been in Virginia and an asset to several different localities and agencies, the awards committee selected us. So four of the members on the 29th went to Hampton, Virginia to receive the award. We were the only fire EMS agency chosen in Virginia to receive the Traffic Safety Initiative Award for 2023. That meant a lot to us. I thought, you know, it was very important for you all to see as well, so we appreciate it. The members, we want to let you know we couldn't do it without you, and it meant a lot to us to have that award. So that kind of ties into my second part tonight, which is one of the things that we're asking for from the volunteer fire company is a request for $20,000. The $20,000 is to go towards an attenuator truck. It's the project. So we have worked with two private individuals in this community that are business owners that provided funds to the volunteer fire company to help us secure the truck. They want to be anonymous. I get that. That's no problem. But what we need is, and what the funds will be used for is to help with the emergency warning equipment, the radios, the lighting, the traffic signage that we need, some equipment, some cones, some barriers, and things like that. Because one of the things that we pushed in this entire initiative was, is that it's not okay for the fire apparatus to continue to get hit. In two years, we've had five trucks struck. Right now, it's taken 15 to, 15 to 20 months to repair them. And if you purchase a new truck, it's approximately what you know, because we have an engine on it, 38 to 40 months to get a new truck. So having our apparatus struck is not an option anymore, and this is nothing that we can have happen. So we want to put the attenuator truck in place for two reasons: to protect the first responders and our apparatus, to keep them here in the community to serve you all. And the other reason is, is that the attenuator truck is designed to take a lick. That's what it was built for, and that's what it's designed for. So that when people are traveling on our highways, if they're to strike that vehicle, that did was designed to give in ways to protect the folks that strike that vehicle, giving them a higher chance of survivability. If they hit the fire truck, let's say ladder truck for example, at 83,000 pounds, it doesn't move. It doesn't give. And it does not give the folks traveling on our highways a high chance of survivability. So for us, we need to do something to protect the rigs, protect the first responders, and give them a better chance to survive.
Council, mayor, I move to appropriate $20,000 from the town's fiscal year '24 undesignated general fund balance to be applied toward the purchase of the attenuator crash cushion truck.
Second.
Discussion?
Has the truck been purchased yet?
Yeah, we have the truck. That's not a problem. I need the funds to help with the emergency side of it, to make it an emergency vehicle so that we can run the truck. The volunteers put up the money. What happened was they found a repo truck. It was a very, very good price. We had a very small window to get. We were able to secure the truck and with the help of an municipal shop, we have it up and running and ready to go. It's just, we need to go to the next step, and I need emergency communication equipment, emergency warning lights, radios, you know, MDTs, things like that to make it a fire truck.
Hey, Michael, for the laypeople out there, which is what I am, looking at this picture, it is very similar to the design that VDOT uses in construction zones.
So I met with IMC 404, which is James Weston, and several of the folks here at the local area office, and that was where they taught us about how the attenuator works and the reason it's designed the way that it is. So if something was to hit that attenuator nine times out of 10, the way they explained to us and showed us in videos is, it's going to damage the attenuator. That's just pinned onto the truck. You take it off and you put a new attenuator on. The hope is that you wouldn't damage your truck and you continue to use the truck. The truck is an F-650, so we can also pull our big hazmat trailer with it and stop putting so much load on it. Those little small pickup trucks that we have, but it's designed to take the licking for us. It meant a lot, so the folks traveling on the highways had a chance to survive as well.
Thank you.
Question, Mayor, just to be educated. So is that thing like squish, like if something happens, it's like a big cushion out, you know what I'm saying?
So it has these foam barriers that are inside the attenuator, but the inside of those bars look like a honeycomb. That honeycomb is designed to take that lick and avoid a crash.
Okay. Any other discussion? Councilman Moody, can I ask you to modify the motion and just, from a standpoint of where the funds would come from, correct me if I might, be from the general fund if approved? Can we state that motion in such a way, council, where the money would come from? Oh, it does. It is stated. It is stated. It is. I apologize.
That's okay.
I apologize. I just know that has been a situation for.
Yes, sir.
All right, thank you. I just want to take clarity. All right, so we have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? Roll call Anna.
Fagan Spoon?
Yes.
Hardy?
Yes.
Honeycutt?
Yes.
Jordan?
Yes.
Lester?
Yes.
Moody?
Yes.
Smith?
Yes.
And Taylor?
Yes.
Thank you.
Thank y'all very much.
Okay, citizens to address council, Mr. Evans?
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, members of council. I just want to be, I'll be very brief. In your packet, you have a data sheet. I know she explained some of the things that we've done the last year. Should you have any questions about any of that, you can reach out to myself or Sandra Connor or Gavin Walton, and we'd be glad to answer those questions or concerns that you have. And Ms. Ricks is going to do the bugger drive in her report, so we do appreciate everything that the town does for us, and we thank you very much.
Thank you.
Mr. Crowe?
Last month, they didn't do the video of the town council meeting, only parts of it. The part I had, they didn't do the video on it. Said it's a mistake. My opinion, a mistake is when you mess in your britches. Just one mistake. I think it's more or less a hideaway. But anyhow, last week when I went over here when the meeting was over with, I had a town council member meet me up down the hallway and call me a liar. Didn't expect no more from him, but he called me a liar in the hall, and he done called me other stuff too, so I don't expect no more out of him. But it seems kind of ridiculous. Okay, I won't thank the fire department, rescue squad, and the police. They do a hell of a good job. You can't ask no more from a community to have the good workers like they got. Now, the town workers, they work their butt off. They, I wouldn't want that job. And the town employees at the office, they're always nice, polite, speak, don't call me names, don't cuss at me. And I appreciate that a whole lot now, except for one. We still got one that's got a problem. Okay, I don't learn to write down some stuff, and it's a job. Why don't we change that tennis court down there where nobody plays on to a basketball court? We got young boys and girls around here that are on the street. They can go over there in the daytime and play ball. They can go there nighttime and play ball. Got all those expensive lights and tennis court and paddle ball. That's for rich people. They ain't going to go over there and play at nighttime. The middle class and the poor people weren't going to go over there and play ball. The makers market. You think I'm ridiculous. This is the biggest mess I've ever seen. This makers market stuff. You hire the girl, you fire the girl, instead of letting the community know that you got the building, going to rent it out. What do you do? Go to Bumptuck, Egypt, get somebody else to rent the building. Now, it should have been left up to the community, see if anybody in the community want to rent the building. I know the town can't handle it, because right next door, you can go over there and get gas, cigarettes, beer, snacks. You go outside, you can get pot, crack, and then turn around and wash your clothes while you're there. And that makers market could never keep up with that place. So I understand why you done it, but the public should have had a say-so about it. Had an option to rent it. I don't know who would want to rent it, but they should, they should have had the option. But no, you got to go over to town to get somebody. And whatever that man can do over to town, the people here smart enough do the same thing. Okay, got, cut me off last week. I want one more thing. This $2 million water line we putting in, that's for special interest. That's not for the public. That's not for the people. That ain't for the people at all. It's for a special interest, and we're going to find out who that special interest is. Soon as you put it in there and they put the building there, we'll find out what the special interest is. But that ain't the way you're supposed to do it. You're supposed to bring it out to us, and y'all talk about it, and we sit down and listen. And then we, give us three minutes that we pass our opinion on it. Y'all elected, but you all, like God, we got opinions too. All of us have opinions. Thank you for the extra time.
Mr. Mayor, may I inquire what it was referred to with the makers market being rented out?
I would rather, any comments, whether it be directed to the town manager?
Would you like me to respond?
Yeah.
There is nothing, there is nothing going on as of yet. Nothing has been approved. Nothing has been signed. I will say that, I mean, we all know that the makers market is not self-sustaining and that there have been opportunities that have been explored for the makers market. So I believe those opportunities are being explored, but nothing is defined, set in stone. Nothing is signed, sealed, delivered yet, so.
Wouldn't by code, wouldn't that have to be put out for public bid just like any other? The town has nothing to do with that.
The building is owned by the CDA, and the food hub is its own organization that manages it. So the town ha, I mean, it's not a, it's not owned by the town, a local government. So no, they don't have to follow Virginia procurement law or anything like that. It's a piece of property that's available, just like any other piece of property, for rent or sale or what have you. The only difference is there is a grant obligation involved, which the town is involved in. So for the next three years, it does have to work as a makers market and fulfill that grant term through 2027. So whatever does happen in there, it needs to continue to do that.
And Mayor, I'm just, I'm going to save my comments for new business, because I would like to address something with that as well. And I'll just save that for new business. Other business, I'm sorry. Yes, sir.
Is that okay?
Yes, sir, that's fine. Yes, sir. Follow proper procedure. Thank you.
Mr. Jones?
I'd like to reintroduce myself. My name is Larry Jones. I've been a part of this community over 31 years. When I moved here, my wife and I thought it would be a good place to stay, and that's how I ended up here. But since then, I've learned that it wasn't by happenstance. It's by divine intervention. And I'm here for a purpose, and I didn't start coming to these meetings just from happenstance. There's a reason why I came. Also, I'd like to thank the community of South Hill for helping me to find out who I really am. Also, I would like to thank the South Hill community for helping me to be in the best shape I've ever been in my life. So I thank you all. I commend you all. God's watching me, and God's watching you.
Thank you.
A public notice inviting bids to provide a non-exclusive franchise for a telecommunications service in the town of South Hill for a period of 15 years was published in the February 28th and March 6th editions of the local newspaper. Written bids are to be opened and read aloud during this public session of council. We did receive one bid from Bright Speed, and I'll just read you the cover. Bright Speed is bringing our fiber optic-based high-speed internet to the town of South Hill. Construction to begin in 2024 with plans to install 17 miles of fiber cable targeting over 2,000 homes in our community. Bright Speed's next-gen technology can deliver internet speeds up to one gig to your home. Bright Speed is seeking a non-exclusive franchise agreement with the town. This agreement will allow for the construction, operation, and maintenance of cables and related telecommunications equipment. I will now open the public hearing for anyone wishing to speak in favor of or in opposition to this request to provide a franchise for a telecommunications service.
That means us in the audience?
Yes, sir.
All right, I'm way clear up here. This is fine. I don't mind it, but make sure everything, they get it across the interstate over there too, where we live, because all we get is taxes. We get no benefits. South Hill Police Department always helped us when we were in the county. And now I'm paying double tax, so make sure that thing goes across that bridge or even don't take it. Anybody that's in the community that wants it, make sure they get it. Just don't ignore people and not let them have it because, well, you crossed the bridge and you can't do it. I didn't want to be in the town. I'd much rather be in the county. County got better roads.
Yes, good evening. My name is Ms. Williams. Now own property here on Highland. And as I've been speaking with Ms. Kelly and Mr. Dean, and previously Mr. Wilson, before he left, in reference to a cable that's been on my property that I've asked to have removed since 2016, and it's still there, and it's Bright Speed. They started out as Bright, I mean, Century Link's, and I've been talking to them, and the new representative for Bright Speed, he's, I've talked to him twice, and they still are not complying. And I think it's only fair that someone needs to compensate for the line that's been on my property for years, and I have asked to have it removed. I do have a signed statement from Kim Callis. He shared what was necessary, but Bright Link says that they have rights, and I have rights too when I own the property. And I think it's only fair that Bright Links need to address their issues before you all, the town, allow them to come in and start laying lines. That's just my business, my opinion. Thank you very much. Have a good night.
Thank you.
Thank you for sharing that. CJ, I'm asking, is that by going with the fiber, will that line be discontinued, or what do you think?
We have been in conversations with the, I'm sorry. We have been in conversation with Bright Speed, and it's being looked at.
Right.
Right over here, and I think they even removed it from the middle of the sign.
No, it's still there on the sign. They have not moved it.
But it's a big cable right there.
Okay, so I'll just.
I'm not sure if it'll be moved, but it's, they're aware of it, yes.
Okay. Question? I'm sorry, I can't call you.
With my property, I wouldn't care with it. I'm saying, okay, let me do this again. If it's on her property, okay, why can't they just address it and say what they're going to do? It's been since 2016.
I don't know how it got there in the first place. It's in a public alleyway. I'm not sure exactly where the property line is. It's something we're trying to resolve.
But they're taking that down.
Have you checked and see whether or not Century Link had an easement whereby they could put it there?
That was looked at by a previous town manager. I'll try to dig up some stuff and see what I can find, but yes.
To me, that needs to be resolved. Either it's on her property and something needs to be done about it, or, I mean, we need to see why it's there.
And I'll add, please know, I mean, I was obviously just alerted to this since I've been here in four or five months, and I have been doing everything in my power. I've talked to CJ about it as well, Mr. Dean as well. It seems, and the history shows, it was just a back and forth. People were just tossing it back and forth and not really doing anything about it. But I do make the promise that we are on it now, and we are trying to get it resolved.
Thank you.
Appreciate that. Thank you.
Kelly, can we see a picture? Bam, do you have a, I don't know if we can address them, but I'd like to, just so that we all are on the same page and know what we.
I can certainly email it to you, to you in the morning.
Okay.
Appreciate it.
Thank you.
Yeah, of course.
Seven years is a long time.
Yes, it's a long time.
Just for clarification, she, have you all seen, have you, at the town manager, have you seen the documentation that she was speaking?
No, the only, no, the only thing I've seen is the line that is on, it's just laying on her sign, on her property.
Okay.
Ms. Ricks, to assure members of the public who may have Comcast Xfinity, the engagement in this non-exclusive ordinance, just to reiterate for those watching and those in the audience, does not mean that anyone's losing coverage.
Absolutely not.
Or simply, frankly, replacing, embarg.
And upgrading.
And upgrading to Bright Speed. Yeah, thank you.
And that's going to be a pleasant experience.
I completely agree.
For everyone. I do appreciate, ma'am, you bringing this to our attention. I mean, I know, again, I mean, that's what this is about. And again, we're not Santa Claus making promises, but I can assure you, this staff will look into it, okay?
I appreciate it. I mean, a compensation, I mean, rent.
Yeah.
It's been there a long time. I think rent, and I haven't been able to take the sign down, because the sign, the sign, the person that does sign work says he doesn't know whether it's hot or cold.
Right.
And that's not my job, and I've just been asking, and I just keep getting a runaround and a runaround. I just think it's just time to address it so I can at least open my business. But to put a pretty sign in the front, and you got this big ugly thing up there, needs to be addressed.
Well, again, I appreciate you taking the time to come and share it with us.
Thank you very much.
Any other comments? I think the public hearing is technically still open.
Okay.
Any other comments? Public hearing is now closed.
Counselor?
So I would make a motion under Rule Number Six, the proposed ordinance to grant a non-exclusive telecommunications franchise that came that was listed and laid out by our town manager, Mrs. Ricks, be approved.
For a period of 15 years with the addition of three five-year terms?
I'm sorry. Thank you, Mr. Moody. South Hill for a period of 15 years, which was published in the February 28th and March 6th editions of the local newspaper. Written bids, whatever. So I move to adopt the ordinance granting a franchise to Bright Speed of Virginia LLC to provide a telecommunications service in the town of South Hill for a period of 15 years, renewing for three additional five-year terms.
Second motion.
Thank you.
Any discussion? Roll call Anna.
Fagan Spoon?
Yes.
Hardy?
Yes.
Honeycutt?
Yes.
Jordan?
Yes.
Lester?
Yes.
Moody?
Yes.
Smith?
Yes.
And Taylor?
Yes.
Thank you, Anna. Council, honor administrative reports. You have before you the minutes and the financial report. May I have a motion to approve the consent agenda?
So no.
Any discussion? All those in favor say aye.
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 All right. First I have for you the Southside Rescue Squad Bucket Drive. As Mr. Evans previously stated, Southside Rescue Squad requests permission to hold its bucket drive fundraiser on Saturday, May twenty-fifth, two thousand twenty-four from seven AM until two PM at the six locations listed in your report. And the recommended motion, of course, is to approve the request to hold their bucket drive on May twenty-fifth.
Make a motion to approve.
Okay, discussion. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?
Next I have for you the Nick's Lane Area Housing Rehabilitation Project Grant. The town has been awarded a community improvement grant from the Virginia Department of Housing and Community Development for the Nick's Lane Area Housing Rehab Project in the amount of nine hundred and nineteen thousand and fifty dollars. The project activities include rehabilitation and or substantial reconstruction of seven low and moderate income housing units and the clearance of junk debris, weeds and inoperable, inoperable vehicles through neighborhood cleanup efforts. As part of the grant acceptance, the town must adopt the Fair Housing Certification, Non-Discrimination Policy, Section Three Business and Employment Plan and Residential Anti-Displacement Plan, all of which are included in your packet this evening. The recommended motion is to adopt the resolution included in your packet accepting these documents.
So move. Second.
All right, can we state the motion?
No.
Counselor made already?
Yes.
Please.
Move to adopt the resolution accepting these documents to serve as guidelines for the Housing Rehabilitation Oversight Board and further authorize the town manager to execute these documents, execute all contracts and agreements and submit all appropriate documentation for the implementation of the project.
Second.
Second.
Any discussion? Roll call in.
Bacon Spoon?
Yes.
Hardy?
Yes.
Honeycut?
Yes.
Jordan?
Yes.
Luster?
Yeah.
Moody?
Yes.
Smith?
Yes.
And Taylor?
Yes.
All right. And finally, I have for you an update on the Employment Policies and Procedures Manual. Upon review of the new manual, staff did find conflicting language in regards to the compensation of employees for emergency callback situations after hours. Prior and current practice aligned with Chapter Three, Section Seven, which states the emergency overtime rates will only apply to those hours worked on the emergency plus one hour of overtime for travel time. Language in Chapter Seven, Section thirteen conflicts with this section and with current practice. The recommendation is to remove the following language from the manual, which includes that personnel that do not have take-home vehicles are required to respond to an emergency after hours and they will be paid mileage at the prevailing federal rate for the use of their personal vehicle. Like I said, current, prior and current practice is that we pay them an hour of overtime so that it's fair amongst all the employees. So like, again, the recommendation is to remove Chapter Seven, Section thirteen relative to being paid at the federal rate for mileage.
So Mayor, I make a motion. I move to approve the recommended change to the employment personnel policies and procedures manuals effective immediately.
Second. Okay, all right. Any discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?
And finally, I did want to make you aware that we did place a revised financial report in front of you this evening. There was an Excel calculation error. So I just wanted you to know that it was actually called by Mr. Moody. I'll give him props. But we did place a revised, it did not, it did not change any balances. Everything is fine. All the money is where it's supposed to be. But we did provide you an updated report.
Okay, counsel. Under reports to accept as presented, our reports are considered informational and counsel looking for a motion to accept.
So move.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, under other business.
Yes, sir. So, and thank you for allowing me this time, but I do want to make a statement to the public right on and different. Social media is a good thing at times, but it also can be a bad thing. There's some really negative publicity that's being aired on social media about the food hub. And I'm going to refer to it as a food hub. To my knowledge and speaking with Mrs. Ricks, in my time here, and I can't say prior to what happened, but the town of South Hill does not fund the makers market or the food hub. Zero taxpayers' dollars go to the food hub. Now, I've been on the budget committee for the last four years. We have had a presentation to, to our committee from the makers market, which is across the street where the little shelters are and so forth. And we have had proposals for, from them. And we have funded them over the last four years in different dollar amounts. I would implore the public that are watching tonight, believe a miniscule of what you see on social media. We've got some of our own folks working against town hall and it makes me sick. But if you have a question about public funds that are being spent, you have access to that because it's your money. It's your taxpayers' dollars that are going to fund these projects. So if you have a question, we have a very knowledgeable finance director. We have a very knowledgeable town manager. Instead of listening to secondhand or seeing secondhand gossip and information on social media, call these persons direct. We're all grown adults living in our community. And again, the more we can stay out of all the social media and out of the papers, there are great things happening in the town of South Hill right now. New leadership, new direction and we don't need this. So don't read it and don't dig into it and get behind it. Just ignore it like you've ever seen it. And, you know, to our fellow council members, you know, if we don't know, I call and ask. I don't put out negative publicity on social media. It's not a place for it and it's not time for it. So again, public dollars have not gone to fund the food hub. Period. Thank you, Mayor.
Any other business, counsel? Hearing, uh?